All right, it is Monday, August 2nd, 6:00 PM. I hereby call this meeting to order of the Lewisville City Council Workshop Session. We have a core problem. To kind of facilitate this, because I think we're going to be tight on time, I'm just going to give Council another minute or two to look through the regular agenda items, and if there's anything specific you'd like to speak on, let's do that now. I'm not going to go through each individual item.
Does everyone have a chance to look at the park board candidates? Yes.
Yes. The last solicited two cents would be that we put Mr. Orpreza back on that board. I think he's outstanding in his own. I know both of them, so it's a hard decision, but I think we're just going to round out and give us a little bit more diversity on that board.
Yes, I do too.
Any other questions or comments about the agenda before we move into the affordable housing conversation? All right, seeing none, hearing none. Staff, if we could go ahead and move forward, I think we have Assistant City Manager Claire Powell.
Rehearing Council, I am excited to bring some creative strategies to the table on how to preserve affordable housing in Lewisville. If you remember, we really started having in-depth discussion about trying to promote affordable housing in Lewisville in 2019. There had been discussion before that, but at this retreat, we brought a deep dive into kind of what our economics are with regard to what is on the ground for affordable housing, what tools we could actually start pursuing. In that, Council, at the very end of that retreat, Council gave many directions, one of them you'll hear echoed throughout this, is about doing a housing study to really determine what level of affordability we need to focus on. But Council said specifically, they wanted to, you guys wanted to find ways to preserve our existing multifamily stocks, so have more investment in those that are on the ground, so we can better the lives of the people living in there, better our communities, so that it's nicer and cleaner, more habitable, but also to try to find a way when people are reinvesting it in those properties, obviously, it's very easy to bump them up to market value at that point, and so how do you preserve that affordability? And then in September 2020, Council adopted the Mayor's Commission's recommendations, that was about the Listen, Learn, Lead Committee that was formed, and that directed city staff to complete a housing study that really focused on what are those AMI levels, average median income, and you see that in this presentation, that we should be focusing on. And you'll see that in this weekend, when we have our budget meeting, it is budgeted for fiscal year '21, '22. And in April 2021, obviously, we updated our 2025 plan, and in there, one of our big moves, which is under the diverse and thriving neighborhoods, it calls for the completion of our housing study, but also focusing on various tools to meet affordable housing needs and development of a strategy for the maintenance and rehab of those existing apartment complexes. So, given that direction from Council, when I received a phone call from the company Amtex, who's in the room right now, the representatives here, and I'll introduce him in a second, saying, hey, we want to do an affordable housing project in Lewisville, obviously, we were very interested in talking about what does that look like? And they are leveraging a very relatively new strategy, and to do so in Lewisville, we could do it on our own, but actually leveraging the expertise of the Denton Housing Authority, we think is probably the best option for us today. And so we'll go through what that partnership looked like. This is the apartment complex that they're currently, that they're focused on and getting the financing to work on, it's at Old Orchard in Bel Air. Obviously, this is middle school right across the street, so there's kids that can walk there. And this is currently an affordable housing project. It does have federal tax credits on it, which keeps the rents very low for these folks. Currently, these are the affordability rates in the project, which is 55 units at 50% AMI and 109 at 60% AMI, and we'll go through what those rates look like in a couple more slides. But the property was for sale, which means at the end of those tax credits, which they run out in 2027, there is no obligation that whoever owns the property maintains that affordability. There's also no guarantee that someone who buys this property is going to put money into the property. I mean, it's a private deal, they could sell it to anyone, and they don't have to put any more investment in it. So, Amtex had contacted us and said, there is this statute that allows you to create a public facility corporation, and that would allow us to maintain affordability. By creating that corporation, it actually takes it off the rolls, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. So this is the company, Amtex, and we have Blake, let me get your name right, Blake Hopkins, who's the Director of Development from Amtex, he's right here, so if you guys have any questions for him, he's glad to answer any of those. But they have a lot of experience in California and Texas, and I think Washington as well. And they have done, you can see the multitude of projects that they've been working on, and they are number six on the nation's top 50 affordable housing developers of 2020. And in fact, Denton Housing Authority has had experience working with them on other, or maybe it was Fort Worth Housing, Fort Worth Housing Authority has had experience working with them, and has told us that they have been a good partner. So the first thing that the city did was we created a multidisciplinary team, and we went out to the property. The property owner was happy to invite us in because we were going to do an assessment that might help him sell the property to a developer who was interested in buying. We didn't just send out code enforcement, because we have a multifamily inspection program that we do yearly, there was very little on the property, and we also looked at our nuisance crime rates, and they were very low as well on the property. So it's actually a very well-run multifamily complex, families are living out there and relatively, I mean, in good, safe, habitable experience. This is the worst picture I could find in all the pictures we took, so it's this siding right here that's kind of degrading, but for the most part, it looks like an aging multifamily complex, there's nothing that's horrific out there. But what we did was we got multidisciplinary teams, specifically had facilities go out, because we wanted them to look at it as if we're an owner of the property, what would we want? Not what's basic code, what do we want? So what would, if we were going to put our family in here, what would we want it to look like? And these were the things that our staff came up with. So the age of the HVAC system, that there needed to be some ADA compliance upgrades, the exterior envelope, basically exterior covering fence, front entry painting, interior departments, they thought, I mean, code doesn't care if you have popcorn ceiling or not, but this might be an upgrade here for families, plumbing fixtures and roofing, with aged roofing as well. And we provided that to, we provided that to Amtex, as well as the Denton Housing Authority, who was looking to form this partnership with us, and basically said, this is going to, we need these things to be addressed if you're going to rehab the property, and we need to make sure there's a budget that's going to cover this to bring this up to a nicer standard for the residents. So this is what the proposed partnership looks like. So basically, and we're going to go into more details about how the legalities of this work and what our role is in this, but there would need to be a creation of a public facility corporation, and that public facility corporation is like a nonprofit, and once they own that property, actually, it's the Denton Housing Authority that would own the property, it comes off the rolls because it's a nonprofit that owns the rolls. By having that flexibility, that allows them to continue to provide affordable housing because they're no longer paying taxes on the property. So I went over the Housing Authority needs to purchase it, or buy the property. Now, we could actually leverage our own housing finance corporation to do this, and that's why when we talk about this partnership with the Denton Housing Authority, we're really dipping our toes in the water here, because there might be an opportunity for us to do this ourselves in the future, we really want to explore that. That doesn't mean we, you know, the next project comes along, we're not going to still consider the Denton Housing Authority, we're going to have Sherri come and talk to you, and you'll see that they have a lot more resources than we do, they have a lot of staff, they have a lot of expertise, things that we just don't have currently. But the way this works is the Housing Authority takes a percentage of the profit every year on this, and so that's able to pay for those salaries. So this is something that could be sustainable for a city, for the city in the future, it's just not something that's, right now, we could pull the trigger and be that player. And so really using the expertise of the Housing Authority is helpful. To be able to allow them to come do work, to do work outside of Denton, we have to have an interlocal agreement. And so that's one of the questions we're going to ask you at the end, is do you want us to move forward with the interlocal agreement with the Denton Housing Authority? And Amtex's minimum investment is going to be almost $3 million to address all those property maintenance issues. 182 units are going to be fully renovated, and the remaining units, they were just previously renovated, so then all of them will be up to, you know, modern standards. And then also, one of the things that was important to staff, and we think would be important to the city council, is that we have this nuisance abatement program for our multifamily, multifamily projects in Lewisville that have a certain high level of nuisance issues, right? Our concern was that this was a pretty well-run multifamily complex with very few crime issues, and the worst scenario I can imagine is if we end up giving it to a new owner and it just tanks, right? And then we have a huge call for service, and we're having more police out there, and the people are not safe. So we want to make sure that this is run appropriately. And so they have agreed to, we've come up with a list of applicable multifamily abatement standards, so like the flock cameras, they would tie in, they would do background checks for their residents, and that type of thing, and everyone's in agreement on all those at this point. And then we would have proposed affordable rent rates. This is one example of one of their largest projects that they've done, you can see this One Project of the Year in Los Angeles, so it's a pretty remarkable project. So this is the proposed affordability. So they're not able to maintain the same level of affordability that they currently have, but it will stair-step up the further along we get out to the future. So currently, until 2027, they're going to maintain the same amount of affordability, this is what they have currently. And then '27 to '2037, they're going to have 55 units at 50%, and 82 units at 80%. And then 2037 to the future, it's 50% of the units set aside for households with income at 80% of the AMI. This is pretty set in stone, just from a financing standpoint. So they've worked all the numbers to make sure, if we're not paying taxes, and we have to charge these rents, and we're investing this amount of money, how do we be able to make this work financially? And this is what all parties have come to, looking at the performance it works. And you can see what the AMI levels are, it is determined by how many people are in your household. So obviously, if you're only one person, you know, it would be a larger amount than if you have a household of three or four. With that, I want to bring up the Denton Housing Authority, but I want to introduce you to some folks first. So this is Sherri McDade, she's the Chief Executive Officer of the Denton Housing Authority, and she'll come up and talk a little bit about her resources and kind of how the partnership might work. There's also Martha Vaez, who's the Executive Assistant for the Denton Housing Authority, and Ramon Coharto Sr., who works for Rommel, and you guys may know him because we actually hire Rommel to do our boots-on-the-ground construction management for Thrive, which is very different than affordable housing consulting, but actually, his background is, he is an Assistant City Manager retired from the city of Fort Worth, and he became, when he retired, started becoming a consultant for the Fort Worth Housing Authority, and then became an expert, I mean, if you talk to anyone who does affordable housing in North Texas, they know him, and he's very knowledgeable. We may be leveraging him on our future, future affordable housing endeavors on our own. So with that, I wanted to bring Sherri up here so that she could kind of talk about what the Denton Housing Authority does, and...
Good evening, I'm Sherri McDade, I'm the Chief Executive Officer for the Housing Authority, and then I really appreciate you giving me the opportunity to come and talk to you a little bit about the Housing Authority, and thank you to city staff also. Ramon is our expert, and he tends to do a lot of the talking for me, and then I can come in and talk to you about the Housing Authority, but his expertise is affordable housing. I've had to learn affordable housing, and I've become, not an expert, but I've certainly learned how to work and how to do affordable housing. I work for a five-member Board of Commissioners at the Housing Authority that are appointed by the mayor, and we administer a housing choice voucher program. And so I have over 1,876 vouchers currently, over 219 of those are here in the city of Lewisville, so we have that many families living in Lewisville using their Section 8 vouchers right now. We have 49 families that specifically live at this property using their Section 8 voucher, and so we have an interest in maintaining this property as an affordable property, because we would all hate to see 49 families having to pack up and move to look for something that's a little more affordable. We're talking about families, we're talking about kids, we're talking about the effect and impact on schools, so this is one reason why we would be interested in helping or assisting you in maintaining the affordability on this property. The Housing Authority currently has five affordable housing developments right now, we have one that's completing construction now, so I have another 876 units of affordable housing in the city of Denton. It's not enough. I think you all know, you're going to finish up your study, I think you're going to find we're probably about five years behind the ball on bringing enough units online, units that are affordable, even for people to be able to use their Section 8 voucher. One thing that I mentioned to my Board of Commissioners and also to the Denton City Council is that you want to make sure that you're not, also not putting all of your affordable housing in one place, in one location, in one area, one district, so keep those things in mind as you're planning, and you're thinking about affordable housing and the families that you're going to serve. As I mentioned, the Housing Authority does form a public facility corporation to do our affordable housing, to keep it separated from the Housing Authority and those operations, and so we've done that, we're used to doing that, we know how to set those up and create them. We have a legal team, we have a legal firm under contract that works with us also on these deals, and so we are very interested in partnering with the city of Lewisville to help or assist you in any way we can. We are interested also in contacting the families that live here, to see what other needs that they may have, to see how we can all help them also, so we'll be looking at some of those things. And as we move on and move down, and we decide to do this, I hope you do, I'm willing to take an interlocal agreement to my Board of Commissioners and see if we can partner on getting something like this done. But I can answer any questions that you guys may have, I recognize one person in the room, so hello, Mayor, but I can answer any questions that you may have about the Housing Authority specifically. But I don't want to take too much of your time. Thank you all very much.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council, Managing City Manager. It's a pleasure to be here with you to talk about this opportunity. Thank you for the introduction, very flattering, I'm not sure if I can make that snigger, but I'll try. Again, as Sherri indicated, currently, the Housing Authority's service area is the city limits of Denton, they were created by the City Council, but Texas government code allows Housing Authority to partner with municipalities in helping that municipality provide affordable housing. So any housing authority in the state of Texas can partner with any municipality in the state of Texas to do a project, and this is what we're looking at. And again, it just allows two entities to work together to be more efficient. Yeah? Here we go. Did I go too far? No, here we go. The proposed ownership structure, as Claire indicated, would be a limited partnership that would be created, it would be the Denton Housing Authority and Amtex to create this limited partnership. An affiliate of the Housing Authority would be a partner, along with Amtex in this partnership. The main affiliate for the Housing Authority would be a public facility corporation that would be created by the Housing Authority to be a partner. And again, this structure, along with the requirement that 50% of the units would be set aside for families that make at least 80% of median income or less, that would allow then the property to be tax-exempt under the Texas government code. It doesn't require any further action by any governmental body. The Denton appraisal district would be asked to determine whether the actual structure and the rent levels would be sufficient to make the property exempt. So again, the exemption of tax, of course, that'd probably be a real negative in some eyes, but the fact remains, if you're going to provide affordable rents, that difference between the affordable rent and market rent's got to be made up somehow, either equity into the property, or some leverage from tax exemption, or some other source. The proposed structure, this is an example, what mostly is done, again, a Texas limited partnership would be created, the partners would include a special limited partner, which would be an affiliate of the Housing Authority, the general partner, again, here we're proposing affiliate of the, of Amtex, and investor limited partner, which would be, again, an affiliate of the, of Amtex that would bring the equity needed to get this done, to purchase it, to make the investments. Then the public facility corporation created by the Housing Authority would actually own the land and the improvements. They would then lease the project to the limited partnership. Again, this structure here was what would allow the property to be exempt from taxes. The investor limited partner would own 99.99% of the partnership. They're the ones that bring in the equity, they are the ones that have the liability on any of the debt, or anything that goes wrong. The city of Lewisville or the Denton Housing Authority would have no financial risk involved, and this is why they own the bulk of the partnership.
Can I add one more thing? This may sound a little bit, you know, they're really owning it, but they're really operating it, does this seem like legit? This is actually completely anticipated by the Texas local government code, so the legislature created this to be able to create a mechanism to create more affordable housing. So this is exactly what was anticipated by the legislature.
And again, I want to make perfectly clear, although they would own, the PFC would own the land and the improvements, and only lease it to the limited partnership, and probably the fact remains is, why would this entity invest money in buying it and improving it when they don't own it, they just have the lease? The documents will be structured to where, if in fact, any time the public facility corporation comes out of the deal, the investor limited partner has the right to purchase the property for debt only. So there is a protection all around, there's no liability, it's sensitive, isn't it?
Yes.
So there's protection for the public entities, the Denton Housing Authority not having any risk, but there's also protection for the investor limited partner, that they can in fact purchase the property if something goes wrong, and operate it then at the market rate in Denton.
And note that the city of Lewisville is not on this page, and we'll go, I just want to hammer this home, we're not, we don't have any liability in this. The only thing we're doing is opening the door for Denton Housing Authority to get this done.
Very good. The other thing I want to mention is that obviously, there's a lot of legal work involved here. The Denton Housing Authority utilizes Coach Rose, it's a law firm headquartered in Houston, they do have offices in Dallas, and that's who they use. Coach Rose, in my opinion, is, I would say, one of the top two legal firms in the country dealing with affordable housing. Barry Palmer is the premier attorney in this area, I've worked with him for over 20 years now, I have worked with Coach Rose on probably 40-something transactions. They're good, and they look after their clients, and I think we can rely on their work. Roles and responsibilities, just generally, again, the city of Lewisville, your requirement or responsibility is to consider this interlocal agreement. You're the one that's got to say, yes, Denton Housing Authority would give you permission to come into our municipality, we'll work together to cause this to happen. The Denton Housing Authority has to also approve the interlocal agreement, they will negotiate a memorandum of understanding with Amtex, they will be a partner in the limited partnership, but will not have any liability for the project's debt. That will rest with Amtex. Again, Amtex and its affiliates will be a partner in the LP, they will assume all of the liabilities for the project, and provide the guarantees for any of the requirements from the lending entity. I believe they're applying for a HUD loan to finance this, Amtex will be the ones that will provide all the liability and provide the guarantees. Sherri?
I just want to add, a part of our role is we do oversee the management of the property. We literally are calling them each month to get information, data, we're talking to the residents, and we're walking the property. We do inspections on every unit that the Housing Authority has a Section 8 voucher on, we will do that, we'll continue to do that, but we do have some oversight, and we take on some role and responsibility for the management of the property.
The agreement that we would enter into with Amtex does give Amtex the right to select the management company, and the reason is because they're the ones who will be liable for the debt, but the Denton Housing Authority, as Sherri indicated, has the right to remove that management company for cause. So there are some checks and balances, we allow Amtex to select who they want, because it's their dollar, they're at risk, but at the same time, we can remove them if they're not complying, and again, the operational requirements that have been discussed, if they're not complying with that, they'll be given a certain number of days to cure the problem, but if they don't cure it, they can be removed. So I'll...
Okay. So I'll just cover the last two slides. So the next steps, if Council directs us to move forward with an interlocal agreement, is that the city and the Denton Housing Authority approve that interlocal. We're on a very quick timeframe on this, so if Council says yes, we're going to try to get into the next council meeting, because Amtex has financing deadlines, and so we're trying to meet those deadlines for them. Second, the Denton Housing Authority will then negotiate a memorandum of understanding with Amtex, that lays out that whole organizational structure that we talked about, liability structure, and then that limited partner agreement will govern the document, will govern all the transaction. Then Amtex goes and secures that financing to purchase and improve the project, and then Amtex closes on the property and begins the rehab, and Denton Housing Authority does that oversight over the rehab and the operations. So with that, we just have a very simple question. Yes, ma'am?
Go ahead, finish.
Well, I just wanted to see if you wanted us to move forward with the partnership.
Okay, so my question is, I understand that the city does not have any liability as far as the project itself goes and the investment, I get that, but we are taking something off the tax rules, there is, there is a cost offset to it. So I guess my question would be, what is that cost? And also, I think I'm understanding correctly, but if the Housing Authority ever gets out of the deal, does that mean the whole, the tax, the tax credit is off the table as well?
That's correct. If the Housing Authority pulls out, and the public facility corporation is no longer the owner, then it goes back on the tax rules.
Okay. And the projected, I wrote that down, because I thought, want to be... Just to give you an idea, for the upcoming year, the anticipated tax revenue lawsuit for the city would be $168,000, but just to make sure it's clear, it's coming off tax rules totally, so it's also county as well as school district as well.
So then they have to approve this as well?
No, again, the tax exemption is approved by the appraisal district. The Texas government code allows for the appraisal district to look at the ownership structure and the rent levels, and if it means the state statutes guidelines, the appraisal district will say it is exempt, and no other governmental entity will have to approve it.
Okay, so I guess I'm not sure then why, so we need to sign an interlocal agreement in order for...
The Denton Housing Authority to operate.
Okay, okay.
It's not approval of any of the structure, it's just because the Denton Housing Authority has a limitation on their area, that's all it is.
All right. I just want to make sure I understand it.
Yeah. Any other questions?
They are, we're legally required to replace those HVAC units, all of them.
Yeah, that's part of the, part of the scope. So in fact, the agreement that we're signing with the Denton Housing Authority, which I think I'll be more heavy-handed than most people, probably. I'm basically, really? Well, I take offense.
She's looking out for him.
We took that whole list of inspection thing, of inspection problems that we found, and we are attaching that to our ILA, saying this needs to be part of the scope of work and fixed.
And keep in mind, Denton Housing Authority, if this is approved, if...
we are attaching that to our ILA, saying this needs to be part of the scope of work and fixed.
And keep in mind, Dent Housing Authority, if this is approved, is very much involved, will be involved. And so I've worked with them now six, seven years, and I know their standard that they have for their properties. They will be the technical owner, they'll take pride, and, you know, again, Mayor, your colleague in Dent is who appoints her board.
That's what I'm worried about.
But, you know, there's always the checks and balances there, because again, they have a reputation to keep, but beyond that, they have the commitment to serve their clients, whether they're citizens in Lewisville or citizens in Dent.
So I'd like to make a couple of quick comments. I know we're a little pressed for time, so I'm going to do it anyway. First of all, I've known Dent Housing Authority for a while now, and a couple of the folks that have been on the board and off the board. An outstanding organization. I have no doubts that they can run this and make this happen. Number two, AMTEX, I want to thank you guys for your patience, because I did have some rather desperate calls early on in this process from you guys, and, you know, I appreciate you holding on and working with us through some of the challenges that we've had for timing, so thank you for that. Again, a great entity to deal with. And then I'm sure you were involved with it at some point, but being able to have the understanding, we actually had as part of the homelessness coalition, maybe two years ago now, we had a run-through on one of the Fort Worth projects, and it really explained in a lot of detail about how debt load and taxation creates a real issue for being able to keep affordable housing within a community. And if you can work through that, through these kinds of tools, or through, as you mentioned, being able to put equity into the building or into the facility, you can get over that hump. Otherwise, what ends up happening is that the debt just keeps spiraling out of control, and you've really just kicked the problem down the road. The structure that's designed here and the way it's set up, based on my education, based on my history and being able to talk with the folks up at Dent Housing Authority, I think this is a really good team that we put together. I think the structure makes sense. And I think, yeah, we're pulling $106,000 off the tax rolls, but this is a commitment to creating that diversity of housing stock that we have in our 2025-2035 plan, and I think that's really short dollars for what we're trying to do.
And then on the other side, I know that's a lot of tax dollars that are lost, but when you look at the value of having a workforce that lives in your municipality, in your city, that lives here, shops here, not living somewhere else, going home and spending their money elsewhere, besides providing the affordable housing that's needed in your community.
So council, we're going to need some direction, I think, to staff, and then we'll need to run out and start up our council meeting.
Let's do it.
Do it.
Okay.
Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right, it is 6:35 PM. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lewisville City Council to order, and we have a quorum. If you would please, Councilmember Cade, invitation.
Stand and join me for a moment of silence, please. Amen. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge to American and Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right. The city manager has requested that we go ahead and move the closed session up to the beginning of tonight's meeting. So in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, legal issues regarding annexation of Castle Hills and the TERS reimbursement agreement between the city, TERS number three and Bright Realty LLC. Item two, Section 551.072, real estate property acquisition, and Section three, item three, Section 551.087, economic development deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We are going to move into closed session. Go ahead and reconvene into the regular meeting. I don't believe there's any actions to be considered. We'll go ahead and move to item C, public hearing. Public hearing number one, continued public hearing, consideration of an ordinance pursuant to Section 311.003 of the Texas Tax Code, amending tax increment reinvestment zone number three, TERS three, located south of State Highway 121 and Business 121, and being wholly located within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of Lewisville, Texas, by amending its boundaries and its benefits to the city of Lewisville and amending the project and finance plan for the zone. Recommendation is that the city council continue the public hearing to August 16, 2021. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to continue the public hearing to the August 16, 2021 meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, if you would please vote. Motion to continue passes five to nothing. Public hearing number two, consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 17 zoning of the Lewisville City Code by amending Section 17-22.7, Old Town Mixed Use II District Regulations to amend multifamily requirements to reduce the minimum floor area of a multifamily dwelling. The reduction of minimum dwelling unit sizes has been proposed in several zoning districts as part of the Development Code overhaul, including a reduction of multifamily dwelling units from 650 square feet to 500 square feet, with an average of 650 square feet. The purpose of these reductions in unit sizes are to reduce unnecessary cost barriers to housing, acknowledge trends of smaller studio and one-bedroom units, and to have increased consistency through the code. Pending multifamily projects in Old Town have been designed with the proposed multifamily dwelling unit size requirements. Therefore, the proposed provision in the Old Town Mixed Use II District is being brought forward ahead of the code overhaul to avoid delays in these projects. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval, seven to nothing, of this amendment on June 15, 2021. It's the recommendation to the city council that we approve the proposed ordinance as set forth in the caption above. I have Mr. Richard Ludke, our planning director, available for questions. Council, if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Motion to close the public hearing passes five to nothing. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve the proposed ordinance.
Second.
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council, amending Chapter 17 zoning of the Lewisville City Code by amending Section 17-22.7, Old Town Mixed Use II District Regulations, to amend multifamily requirements to reduce the minimum floor area of a multifamily dwelling, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date declaring an emergency.
Council, if you would please vote. Motion to approve passes five to nothing. Thank you, council. Public hearing number three, consider an ordinance approving amendments to Chapter 17 zoning of the Lewisville City Code by amending Section 17-3, Definitions, to amend the definition of motor freight terminal and Section 17-23, Light Industrial District, to add motor freight terminal as a permitted use with a requirement for a special use permit. The consumer shift towards home delivery of goods accelerated during the COVID-19 pandemic. In response to this trend, demand increased for locations that facilitate loading, staging, queuing, and dispatching delivery vehicles for last mile deliveries. The use generates significant traffic that can have negative impacts related to congestion, air quality, noise, and lighting. To clearly define the use and mitigate potential negative impacts on surrounding properties, it is recommended that the definition of motor freight terminal be amended to incorporate these new activities, and to allow them in the light industrial and heavy industrial zoning districts with the approval of a special use permit. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous six to nothing approval on July 20, 2021. It's a recommendation that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Mr. Richard Ludke is available for questions. Council, if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Motion passes to close the public hearing, five to nothing. Need a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council, amending Chapter 17 zoning of the Lewisville City Code by amending Section 17-3, Definitions, to amend the definition of motor freight terminal and Section 17-23, Light Industrial District, to add motor freight terminal as a permitted use with a requirement for a special use permit, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date declaring an emergency.
Council, if you would please vote. Oh, I've got a second. Yep, there it is. Council, if you please vote, and that passes five to nothing. Thank you so much. Public hearing number four, consideration of a resolution authorizing the adoption of the Community Development Block Grant 2021 Annual Action Plan, authorizing for the city manager to submit the plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and acknowledgment of receipt of the recommended fiscal year 2021-2022 city social service agency fund budget of $170,000 from the CDBG Advisory Committee. An annual action plan must be submitted to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, by August 15, 2021, as a requirement to receive community development block grant funds of $784,038 in fiscal year 2021-2022. The CDBG Advisory Committee reviewed applications submitted by nonprofit agencies for projects that address HUD national objectives and consolidation plan priorities. At a meeting on June 29, the committee voted seven to zero to recommend a social services budget with CDBG and city funds. On July 20, the committee also recommended approval of the annual action plan by a vote of five to nothing. The plan was made available for a 30-day public comment period. It's recommended that the city council approve the resolution, acknowledge receipt of the city's social service fund budget, and authorize the city manager or her designee to submit the plan as set forth in the caption above. Council, if there are no comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. If council would please vote. Motion to close the public hearing passes five to nothing. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve, and a knowledge receipt of the social service fund authorized the city manager and designee to submit the plan as set forth. Is that correct? Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. Just making sure we got all of our i's dotted and t's crossed for our city attorney, because this one had like multiple bits on it, right? If everybody could please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Thank you, council. Item D, visitors' citizens forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. Speakers attending the meeting remotely are asked to email their contact information for the record to citiesecretary@cityoflewesville.com. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. City Secretary, do we have any?
Yes, we do. We have someone on, Joan Gillum is on Zoom and would like to speak.
Right. Mr. Gillum?
It's Ms. Gillum. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
I'm here this evening to present my comments about the Timberbrook Construction Project. My residence is in the center of the subdivision, as I reside in a home on the corner of Redwing and Magnolia. I have been impacted by the construction since the project started, as DDM and their subcontractors utilized Redwing and Magnolia like express lanes to cut through the neighborhood. One of my biggest concerns is safety issues with DDM and their subcontractors. I want to share with you one of the many incidents that have occurred on this job site. Last week, my gardener, who is a 16-year-old high school student, had just finished mowing my yard. We were both standing near his truck that was parked on Redwing. All of a sudden, we heard brakes and tires squealing. I looked to my left to see a DDM truck and a DDM trailer whizzed by us on Redwing with the wheels on the trailer completely locked up. The DDM vehicles just missed my gardener's truck. Then the DDM vehicle and trailer proceeded down, to drive down Redwing towards Live Oak. Then we heard the tires squealing again as the vehicle attempted to stop at Live Oak. I immediately came back in the house and called City Hall. I was connected with Chris Lee, was onsite along with Mary Iowa. They both were onsite at the time and walked over from Mockingbird with the DDM supervisor. They were able to see the skid marks. Chris Lee has told me he identified the driver and the vehicle. The driver admitted he knew he was driving a vehicle that the tires on the trailer were locking up when he attempted to stop, but he drove it anyways. I have seen numerous DDM employees driving the large equipment and their vehicles while texting and driving, their faces looking down while the equipment is moving forward. I have also seen excess speed of DDM vehicles and their subcontractors. I've been requesting for all the vehicles to have a backup warning signals as well. DDM and their subcontractors hit at least two parked, parked vehicles. It is obvious from all the safety issues I have observed, there is no safety protocols or training for any of DDM's employees. Also, DDM allows their employees to drive unsafe vehicles. When was the last time all their vehicles and equipments had any safety inspections? There is no risk management or safety officer. What happened after this latest incident, where they almost hit my 16-year-old gardener's truck, and possibly even him? Did DDM just give another verbal warning? What would have happened if a city employee would have driven and continued to drive a vehicle and trailer that the tires were locking up when they attempted to stop? Another safety issue was we have, they had rock delivered placed in large mounds on Magnolia. The mounds were so high, you could not see any oncoming traffic. It was left like this overnight. It took me calling City Hall or Chris Lee to finally get them to reduce the height of the rock pile so we could see to get out of the alley. Another issue is the dirt. The dirt is continually being flung into the air and then into our homes by DDM employees. This has been an ongoing issue that has gotten a lot worse with the construction of Mockingbird. DDM had a green vacuum sweeper that worked well to vacuum up the dirt, but they broke it when they were working on sweet cup. Instead, they use this red sweeper that only slings the dirt up into the air and in the gutters. Then they come back in a day or two and sling it into our homes again and again. They never pick up the dirt. There are inches of dirt piled high in the gutter right now. I've been provided a copy of the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan by Jason Longby, a city employee. The SWP states it's a living, breathing document and can be changed at any time. The SWP requires DDM to reduce the dust generated by construction activities, including grading, demolition, and travel on untraved temporary roads. And they are supposed to control the water and, with water, the dust, as needed. And they are supposed to be using the water truck for dust suppression, but instead of reducing the dust, they're creating more dust and slinging it up in the air into our homes on a daily basis. The end of May, I had a meeting on the job site with Jason Longby, Chris Lee, Kyle from Stormwater, and Matt from DDM.
Ms. Gillum, that has been your five minutes. City Secretary, do we have any other?
I have not received any other cards, Mayor.
Thank you. Item E, all of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card, or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. If there are no questions on the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Council, if you would please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item F, regular hearing. Item 10, continued item, consideration of an amendment to the tax increment reinvestment zone reimbursement agreement by and among the city of Lewisville, the Lewisville Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone number three, TERS three, and Bright Realty LLC for project costs within tax increment reinvestment zone number three, and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement. So the recommendation for this is that the city council continue this item to the August 16, 2021 meeting. I do have a speaker card. I do have a speaker card filled out from Mr. Patrick Kelly. Mr. Kelly? If you could please state your name and address for the record.
Patrick Kelly, 2511 St. Turquen Lane, Lewisville, Texas. Gilmore, thank you for your time this evening. I think I've met most everybody up here at least once or twice. And by way of clarity, I'm Patrick Kelly, two-decade resident of Castle Hills. Been involved with Castle's politics since about 2010. elected to the 1B Board in 2012 and have been serving in that capacity ever since. I want to take a quick minute to talk to you about the topic at hand, annexation, TERZ, SPA, all interrelated items. My understanding is there's been a considerable back and forth with the developer regarding TERZ, SPA, annexation, all related, like I said before. And it's also been brought to my attention that the reluctance of 1B and 1D specifically to pass the SPA arrangement, may have been used to indicate that we were not in support of annexation. And that couldn't be further from the truth. We were holding up base specifically on trying to make sure park control went over to the city and didn't remain with the developer. As of July 19, though, I'm happy to say that the board, the 1B Board, put our weight behind Lewisville and we passed a SPA amendment unanimously, unanimously, five to zero. The 1D Board was also present at that meeting. They passed a SPA amendment as well, but with a caveat that the developer and the city needed to figure out what's going to happen with the parks. And then for further clarity, I wanted to go through just real quick a list of the boards and where they stand, as well as who controls the boards, because that's an important part of this puzzle here. And I think you'll see a pattern. So 1B, Resident Controlled Board, we passed that in July, July 19, as a matter of fact. 1C is a Developer Controlled Board. So five positions, three of those positions are controlled by the developer, two by residents. That has not passed. 1D, Residents Controlled Board, passed July 19, along with 1B on contingent upon parks annexation, or I'm saying parks control going over to the city. 1E, Resident Controlled, heavy discussion at the meeting in July. I am confident that will be passed by the board in their August meeting. I'd be surprised if it wasn't. 1F, Resident Controlled Board, that was passed also in July. 1G, Developer Controlled Board, not passed. 1H, Developer Controlled Board, when I say Developer Controlled, all five on that board, as far as I can tell, are developer appointees, not passed. And then 1A, that's a one-acre district. It's for control purposes only. It's not, there's no homes on that land whatsoever, but developer controlled, and they also have not passed that, the SPA arrangement. So the major sticking point has been parks. And I say that because I think it may, the impression may be given that the concern is that the parks will go to the city, and really the concern is that the parks won't go to the city. So I am confident that the residents inside of Castle Hills, and I know on the boards 1B and 1D in particular, we would like the parks to go over to the city. We feel like that's the only way that we know those parks will stay parks and be able to benefit the future residents of Castle Hills. And that's everything I have to say about this. And certainly, everybody knows how to get ahold of me if you need to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the input, Mr. Kelly. All right. I'll entertain a motion to continue this item.
Move to continue this item to the August 16, 2021 city council meeting.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you would please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item 11, consideration of an ordinance amending the Lewisville City Code, Section 15-35, maximum speed limits on specific streets, establishing speed limits on Josie Lane from 1,900 feet south of State Highway 121 to the South City Limits of 50 miles per hour. Josie Lane, a six-lane divided arterial street, currently has no posted speed limits in this segment from 1,900 feet south of State Highway 121 to the South City Limits with Carrollton due to its relatively recent annexation. Staff conducted studies on Josie Lane, and the 85th percentile speed from the study is 54 miles per hour. Based on the speed study results, adjacent land use, and to be consistent with the existing speed limits in the adjacent segments, staff recommends a posted speed limit of 50 miles per hour. The Transportation Board considered this item at the July 6, 2021 meeting and voted unanimously seven to nothing to approve the recommendation to the city council. It's a recommendation that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. I have Mr. David Salmon available for any questions. Actually felt that that stretch of road was quite freeing when I drove it early this year. I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Move to approve.
Second.
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the Lewisville City Code, Chapter 15, Section 15-35, by amending the speed limit on Josie Lane, providing for repealer severability and a penalty, providing an effective date, declaring an emergency.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you would please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item 12, consideration of an ordinance amending the Lewisville City Code, Section 15-36, maximum speed limits near schools, establishing school zone speed limit on Josie Lane from 500 feet north of the Memorial Elementary School North driveway to 500 feet south of Lake Falls Terrace of 35 miles per hour. LASD plans to open a new elementary school on Josie Lane, Memorial Elementary School, for the upcoming 2021-2022 school year. The school creates a need for the establishment of a school zone on Josie Lane. Because the proposed speed limit on Josie Lane is 50 miles per hour, a 35 mile per hour school, school zone speed limit is proposed 500 feet on either side of the school boundary. Similar 35 mile per hour school zones exist on FM 544 and on FM 3040, which are both 50 mile per hour speed roadways. The Transportation Board considered this item at the July 6, 2021 meeting and voted unanimously seven to nothing to approve the recommendation to the city council. It's a recommendation that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above, and we have, again, Mr. David Salmon available for questions.
I have a quick question for David. So I know the stretch of road fairly well, and from what I recall, it's pretty hilly, correct?
Correct.
So I was just wondering if the limits of this school zone have been evaluated based on some of the elevation rise and drops? Is there a good visibility within that 500 feet? Or are you kind of, is that going to be factored into this 500 feet? Is that where that came from, or is this just a standard?
No, actually, the school zone was lengthened a little bit longer than normal simply because of the high speeds. I don't believe the hilliness or the grade differences were taken into account.
Okay, I was just worried about the visibility of cars coming up at 50, and then all of a sudden, they're in a school zone and they can't see into the school zone because of the hill. That was my only concern.
Okay, well, we do have Saager, our traffic engine here, and he may be able to shed some light on that specific issue.
So the school zone, the typical school zone is at 200 to 300 feet from the school boundary. In this case, because of the high speed of the roadway, we have, we're putting a longer school zone, 500 feet on either side. And in addition to the school flashing beacons, 300 feet in advance of the beacons, we're going to have school zone ahead warning signs.
Okay.
Both in the median and on the right side.
Okay, that addresses my concern. Thank you.
One quick question, David. Is Josie a state-run road, Josie Lane?
No, it's, the city operates and maintains it.
Okay, so I was reading in there, it was a 15-mile increment that you could reduce it. I thought that, I know we had that before with 30-40, and it was a little different rule, so I was just wondering if that was why we went to 35 instead of 20. Just curious. With no other questions, Mr. Mayor, I'm ready.
All right. I have a motion.
Move to.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second.
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the Lewisville City Code, Chapter 15, Section 15-36, by establishing a school speed zone on Josie Lane from 500 feet north of the Memorial Elementary School North driveway to 500 feet south of Lake Falls Terrace, providing for repealer severability penalty and an effective date declaring an emergency.
All right. City council, if you would please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item 13, consideration of variances to the Lewisville City Code, Section 6-103, access management regarding driveways and deceleration lanes for Prologis Waters Ridge on Lot 2R, Block C of Waters Ridge Edition, as requested by Kaylee Flynn, Half Associates, on behalf of the owner. The subject site is a 14.42-acre lot zoned light industrial within the Waters Ridge Edition located at 1601 Waters Ridge Drive. The property owner is expanding the existing office warehouse from 244,000 square feet to 306,205 square feet. The owner is requesting the following variances. A, to waive the required deceleration lane at a driveway for lots that exceed five acres, and B, to reduce the required driveway spacing of 50 feet along Waters Ridge Drive. It's recommended that the city council approve the variances request as set forth in the caption above. And again, Mr. Salmon is available for questions. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you would please vote. Approve five to nothing. Item 14, consideration of a variance to the Lewisville City Code, Section 6-103E, access management auxiliary lanes for Jubilee Industrial Park, a 10.4-acre parcel zone, zoned heavy industrial located at Jubilee Lane and Riverview Drive, as requested by RC Plug III, Half Associates, on behalf of the owner. The developer is proposing to construct two office warehouses totaling 174,000 square feet. The developer is requesting a variance to waive the required deceleration lane at a driveway for lots that exceed five acres. It's recommended that the city council approve the variance request as set forth in the caption above, and Mr. Salmon is available for questions. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the variance?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you would please vote. Motion passes five oh. Item 15, consideration of acceptance of the resignation of William Scholl from Place Number Two on the park board. Declare a vacancy exists and consideration of an appointment to fill the vacancy on the park board. William Scholl has submitted his resignation from the park board. Mr. Scholl has served in Place Number Two on the park board since 2013. Data sheets of applicants interested in serving on the park board have been included for city council review. It's a recommendation that the city council accept the resignation, declare a vacancy, and consider an appointment as set forth in the caption above. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to accept the resignation, declare a vacancy, and appoint Rich Oropesa to Place Number Two on the park board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you would please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item 16, consideration of a resolution extending the declaration of local disaster for public health emergency until 11:59 PM on August 16, 2021. On February 17, 2021, Mayor Rudy Durham, acting in accordance with authority granted to him under the City Charter and Code of Ordinances and under Section 18.108(a) of the Texas Government Code, declared a local state of disaster for public health emergency due to concerns related to COVID-19, the disaster declaration, when the Lewisville City Council subsequently ratified, supported, and continued until 11:59 PM on August 2, 2021. Ongoing evaluation of circumstances related to the virus and the updated recommendations of the Centers for Disease Control and the Texas Department of State Health Services indicate that the conditions necessitating the disaster declaration have and will continue to exist for a period extending beyond August 2, 2021. It's a recommendation that the city council consider the resolution as set forth in the caption. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you would please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item G, reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. We'll go ahead and start with city staff. Mr. Lutke?
Nothing to report, mayor.
Mr. Salmon?
Nothing, mayor.
Mayor, city council, I do have one report to make. This is just a recognition of award by our purchasing department. I'm just going to read the press release and just recognize the work of Tracy O'Gurk, who is a purchasing manager in our team. The city of Lewisville has been awarded the prestigious 26th Annual Achievement of Excellence in Procurement for 2021 from the National Procurement Institute. The AEP Award is earned by public and nonprofit agencies that demonstrate a commitment to procurement excellence. This annual program recognizes procurement organizations that embrace innovation, professionalism, productivity, leadership, and e-procurement. The AEP program encourages the development of excellence as well as continued organizational improvement to earn the award annually. For 2021, there were 179 successful applicants. The city of Lewisville was one of just 63 cities that earned its recognition this last rating period. Of the 165 points that they had submitted towards award, they received 91% or 150 points of that. We've received this reward for 27, or excuse me, 23 consecutive years, and there's only seven other agencies that have participated in this program that have received more or more consecutive years than the city of Lewisville. So again, I just want to congratulate Tracy O'Gurk and her team for this accomplishment.
Thank you so much. It's always important that we recognize those folks who do amazing work, and we have a ton of them here, so thank you so much. Mr. Kunkke?
Thank you, mayor. Just two quick notes related to events in and around Lewisville. The first is looking forward to September 18. That's the week prior to Western Days. We have signed an agreement to bring a Pro Bull Riders PBR event to the Lewisville Rodeo Arena. Very excited about this. It'll be the first event held there in a little more than two years. Renovations are still underway, and we'll be able to hold the event. There might be some finishing touches to do afterward, but the event will go on and be a success. As part of that, the Cattle Drive Parade, that has historically been part of the Western Days Festival, will move to the rodeo Saturday. So that will be a change that we will be letting people know about. And the second is an event that we just had this past week, and I say "we," Lewisville's involvement was helping bring it here and helping support it, but all the work was actually done by our friends at Lewisville ISD. The USA Water Polo National Junior Olympics held, they called it Session Number Three, last week, from Thursday through Sunday, at West Side Aquatic and six other locations around North Texas. This is the largest water polo event in the United States. It's typically held in California, but they felt with the existing COVID restrictions in that state, they needed to relocate, so they moved to Texas for this year, and we're hoping they had a good enough time, they'll want to just keep on coming back. So Lewisville, West Side Aquatic, and the East Side over in the Colony were among the venues for this, so were SMU, Dallas Jesuit, South Lake Carroll, and Denton ISD. So you have six locations that work together to make this happen. Could not have been possible without our partners over at Lewisville ISD. They continue to really come through with their aquatic centers. And on a fiscal note, this generated an estimated 820 paid room nights at Lewisville Hotels, so a success all the way around. And we thank them for their help and thank you for your support.
Thanks, sir.
Mayor, just a quick update on the lake level. We're at 522.0, which is the normal pool level, so right even.
Very exciting. Mr. Lee?
No report, mayor.
Nothing, mayor.
Nothing, mayor.
All right. We're going to start with Mr. Troyer tonight.
This is a first after five years almost. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some things going on at the Lewisville Grand Theater. First of all, performances. The Lewisville Looks Back, the 1972 Season of Hope documentary film presented by the city of Lewisville, will be on August 6. There'll be two shows. We did see a preview of this at the retirement celebration of former mayor Durham, and I'll tell you, it's a really well-done show, and I'm looking forward to seeing it again. Secondly, we have the Texas Toons Concert, Marchabel or Ball. Unfortunately, if you don't have tickets, too bad, because it's sold out. This is also presented by the city of Lewisville, and this is on August 14. Then every Friday night, we have the Acoustic Jam presented by the Virtual Art League of Lewisville. Usually starts at sevens by 7 o'clock, but I think last Friday, they started at 6. I don't know if that's going to become a regular thing or not, but the acoustic jam is something to be seen. Activities going on at the theater, songwriting workshop featuring Terry Hendricks with Lloyd Mainz, presented by the city of Lewisville on August 7. The Val Art Talk, Visual Arts League, Arts in a Small Town, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville on August 10. And then art exhibitions that are ongoing right now. I Am Woman, an exhibition by Missy Burton, presented by the city of Lewisville. And then Fresh Ideas, that will be through August 14. And also through August 14, Fresh Ideas 2021, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Green?
Is it my turn?
It is.
I just wanted to mention one thing, reiterate actually, because I know the Parks Department has done a great job of putting out the word about this, but there are many scatterbrained people around, including myself, so I thought I would just remind everybody as well that Thrive is closed for the week, and it's on purpose. It's for cleaning and maintenance, and it will be back pretty and clean open next week.
Mr. Jones?
All right, a couple things. Getting back to... Getting back to school season, Back to School Fair will be held at Westside Baptist this Sunday. You can come by, get, pick up school supplies, you can donate them this week, it's Sunday, August eighth, from one to five. And also for those nerds like me who like to know about the city budget, that will be happening this Saturday from, starting at eight to nine o'clock for the public?
Nine o'clock.
And it's a lot of fun to see how the city budget is done, put together. It's a very educational experience. Oh, yes, it will be at the Annex in City Hall in the community room. Thank you, Ron.
Ms. Kate?
Not a thing.
Not a thing? All right. Well, I want to thank everybody for their time this evening. Right? I'm just going to move right past you.
Right past you. That's what happens with your system.
I know, I get, I confuse my own self, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for holding the line.
I have some library activities for the week. Storystroll, storytime, say that three times. Friday, August sixth, eleven fifteen to twelve at Central Park, no registration required. Hive online training. Required training for the Hive Maker Space at Louisville Public Library is now available online. Prior to using their items, you must have this training. That's all I have.
Outstanding. Thank you, sir. And cool tools over there, so I happen to be trained in all of the devices that are there, so if you need some help, let us know. I want to thank the residents of Louisville and Highland Village and Flower Mound this past week, and in very hectic and short notice, we had the opportunity to have a pizza competition and fundraiser for three of our Best of Denton County not-for-profit finalists. Those would be Journey to Dream, Kyle's Place, and CCA. I'm sorry, Cloud Nine Charities, Kyle's Place and CCA. And the mayors of Highland Village, Flower Mound, and Louisville, we got to all compete, which was entertaining at the very least. So if you don't have any idea of what's going on this time of year, there's an event called Best of Denton County, and we have tons of businesses in lots of different categories that are nominated. We actually have Officer Slavens, who is nominated as one of our top three law enforcement folks, so we need to get out there and vote for him. But please take a moment, just Google Best of Denton County, and you're going to find an opportunity to vote for those folks and small businesses and whatnot. But more importantly, you know, if you have a little extra cash, throw it at a local small business, throw it at our local not-for-profits, they really could use your help as we're getting back into back-to-school season, and especially as we start seeing COVID numbers starting to creep up, people are getting a little antsy and maybe not going out as much, so make sure you're supporting those small businesses. With that, I don't think we have anything else for the evening, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
All right, I have a motion and a second. Council, if you please vote. All right, that's five to nothing. We are adjourned.